This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education, Business Meeting and Budget Hearing for June 11th, 2019. To begin with this evening, we will conduct our legally required budget hearing on the proposed 2019-2020 revised school budget that will be available for public to vote on on June 18th. So the beginning part of our meeting order will be a little bit different tonight. Our public participation piece, the opportunity for the public that is here in attendance to ask a question or make a comment, we will hold that until after Dr. McGowan updates the community on the budget proposal. And then when he's complete, when that's completed, we'll offer the opportunity for public participation, first on any questions or comments with regard to the budget, and then we will have a public participation opportunity for any other questions or comments that you might have to those that are here in attendance. So to begin with, I call on Dr. McGowan in updating and reminder, I guess, more than anything else, on our revised budget proposal.
Thank you very much. So we've presented this and talked about it in great detail over the past several weeks. This will be a very brief walkthrough of the essential items, the essential numbers. Again, all of the materials being posted to the website and probably in great detail, not needing to go through every page extensively, but certainly open to any questions and feedback. This is, in the hearing portion, meant to just give the highlights for this evening and for the revised proposal. As we had mentioned to you before, that we reviewed the feedback, developed revised spending plan based on that feedback, and looked at the impact both short and long term to any potential reductions. What we found in this budget process after the initial vote was simply that our community was saying to us taxes were too high, the increase was too high. Going over the cap was a significant concern. Many people felt they couldn't afford the increased reassessments, and federal tax policy were certainly a concern. People were very supportive of quality and they want to support that, but again, too much. People asked us to be transparent, now use scare tactics, live within our means, make sacrifices, and get our state aid situation figured out, but please don't use that as an excuse was a common refrain as well. We felt that the proposed budget initially met mandates, and I've used the analogy before that like a financial planner that tells you this is exactly what you should do and how much you should save, and the person on the other side of the table says that's great, but maybe I can't afford that. We feel the community received the financial plan that made sense from a financial planning perspective, but that people in the community felt as though it didn't make sense, zoot type, bless you, for them in particular and in their household budget, and we wanted to be respectful of that as well. So this revised budget stays within the cap, re-prioritizes our existing resources to meet our objectives at this point, and provides scaled back funding, but still supports our priorities going into next year. And a common theme through this is that we were able to use money that is in the budget for either future expenses or expenses that we are going to defer to pay for programs, some program now, knowing that we will have to reduce those items in the future, and that we've outlined that, but that reducing them now when we have funding sources set aside within the budget didn't seem to make the most sense for program and for our students. So what are we looking at now? The revised budget is a 2.8% increase in spending. The, I'm sorry, 2.8% difference from the adopted budget 1819, yes, and the 1920 budget, so an increase in spending. And that means an increase in taxes of 2.34%, which is complying with the New York State tax cap. What does that mean in terms of impact? You can see on the left-hand side of the screen, the tax rate will go from $24.71 to $25.14 in the town of Pittsburgh, $24.70 to $25.14 in the town of Brighton. There's an equalization rate that's provided by the state for that. A rate increase of 43 cents in both cases are 1.75%. You can see on the right-hand side how that is spelled out based on the value of your home, all the way from $75,000 home, an estimated increase of $32 annually to a $350,000 home, an increase of $152 for next year. This is a summary essentially of the objects within the budget, and again, all the detail being posted online. Again, all adds up to a spending increase then of 2.8%. That's a spending increase, not the tax increase, which again is within the cap of 2.34%. And where does that break down in terms of the object summaries? We are less $716,000 in salaries, less $40,000 then in corresponding benefits, less $280,000 in supplies and services, and less $300,000 in debt service from the original proposal. So 73% of our spending increase or .31% is on salary and benefits on the people that we employ. And again, on the right-hand side down in the corner, the most important number there is that the debt service is still up $900,000 instead of the originally proposed $1.2 million. And that's to begin the payment for the facility improvement project adopted in 2017. The alternative budget proposal certainly limits the immediate impact. We're still able to support some positions through limited grant funding and the one-time borrowing from long-term financing. The best example for that in the next bullet around future reductions and having time to plan those reductions and different programs for students is the money that's been set aside for full-day kindergarten, which will begin in 2021. That is non-negotiable. That program is happening. We've planned for that. We are building for that. That staffing allocation, we won't need till 2021, so we're able to use that right now to pay for other student programming, for example, 4th grade internal music or 6th grade foreign language. And when that program does go online, those programs then will see a corresponding reduction, unless funding changes dramatically between now and that point, which we continue to work on as well. We're reorganizing and redistributing, redistribution of assignments. It will certainly impact service to our community. We recognize that. Additional fees and program costs for field and facility use will certainly impact our community users as well. And those programs, remember, will be reduced in future budgets should we not receive additional funding for that. We're trying to be very, very clear about that, but that this is a more pragmatic approach. It caps our immediate growth and allows us to stay within the cap and really refocus organizationally and think about how we can plan for those program reductions in a more practical, pragmatic manner to mitigate that program and staff impact in the immediate sense. So in this current plan, what we are deferring, reducing, or cutting is that debt service expense, furniture and equipment, one instructional coach, the CPSC position, family navigator position, but it will be grant funded, so we're still able to support that mental health aspect. Security staff, two of the three additional will be funded. Additional funding for the diversity equity position will not be provided, AK through to classroom teacher. Restructuring the buildings and grounds department that was planned will not be funded. Program assistance in the athletic program, so some of the assistant coaching that is throughout the program. We're not reducing teams or programs at this point, but some of the additional coaching support, professional development, travel conference spending, continuing education support to some degree, clubs and activities at the secondary level, non-mandated transportation, supervision. So some of the teacher aid support on the bus will not be provided. 9 through 12 summer school will be reduced, not eliminated. AIM staffing will be reduced, not eliminated. A BHS clerical position will be reduced as well, one of the positions. A computer aid position will also be reduced at the secondary level, and we'll charge back the technical theater manager to the summer Hertz program. And we will, of course, begin facility use fees for gyms, grass fields, and rents, and some of our substitute teacher coverage will be reduced as well. And then this next list, which we won't recite to you, but these are the contingency budget items. So what else would happen if the community chooses to not adopt this revised budget? What would happen in a contingency where we are not by law allowed to raise taxes one penny from the year before? We would have to take those reductions, and instead of some of them being reductions, they'd be entire cuts, and there are other areas that we would have to look at as well. Some of these items, it should be noted, are items that we will have to look at though in future budget years. So the idea would be, we're again using some of the funding within the current year budget to maintain them for this year, the idea being that we will have to reduce them in the future, but this gives us the time and opportunity to plan for that, for student programming and for staff. But if we had to go to a contingency budget now, again, if this budget didn't pass, we would have to right away go to these places and make reductions, and those would be class sizes at the secondary and the elementary level, so reducing teaching positions, the format of instructional coaching, and as I mentioned, the foreign language in 6th grade, 4th grade internal music, which are programs that make us unique and special, but they would need to be reduced, field trip spending, all of the athletic program assistance incentive sum, an administrative position in humanities, the summer school program for elementary students, a high school assistant principal. We'd have to look at our videographer program. Transportation for private and parochial schools on non-Brighton school days, when many schools have a different calendar than we do, and that's the one place that many people in our community are able to utilize a school service. That's a non-mandate though that we would have to look at as well. Professional development, travel conference, additional reductions, continuing education, clubs activities even further, modified teams, non-mandated supervision, as I had mentioned, extended studies program, more of the summer school program, in fact, probably the whole program, and the foreign language intern program. Again, in the case of a contingency budget, many of these programs we'll have to look at in future budget years as well. And this information posted just spells out each of the specific budget lines that those reductions are coming from. Taking a look at the class size reduction, just to point out to people that right now we would anticipate with the reduction of a position, that we would be looking at 18.8, about 19 students in the kindergarten classrooms, and that's where the reduction is going to take place at this moment, but we'll continue to monitor enrollment figures and make decisions as we get closer to the opening of school around that particular position. Right now, we are planning on it being a kindergarten position. So the questions people may ask is, well, then what did you really cut? Why didn't you do it in the first place, and what's the long-term impact? Well, we did cut professional development, instructional coaching, new funding for diversity equity, furniture equipment, debt service, the full-day K funding, all being used to support program for one year, one year only. We're using an administrative organization to assume some of the duties that would have otherwise maybe been picked up in the mental health area, but to build capacity in that area, supervision in that area, and look at essentially what amounts to somewhat of a reduction for support at the high school level administratively to take on some of the mental health duties as well. The CPSC position, program assistance, elementary summer program, high school summer program, clubs activities to some degree, that support in the clerical and computer lab area, and a portion of staffing for the AIM program. So we also want to make sure that the 45% of people who did vote no recognize that there was an impact and that their desire for us to reduce spending has certainly, we feel, been met in this second proposal, but trying to balance that with 55% of people who also said yes and are saying that they are supportive and honor really the 100% of our population in this community. Why didn't you do it in the first place? Well, again, if we go back to that analogy of the financial plan, the short-term impact is significant in next year in terms of our service, but we know that this is a one-year solution and that it is unlikely we'll receive a significant change in funding from the state going into next year, which means those programs will be scheduled for reduction. We know that that's a long-term impact that would not have been felt if that, if the previous budget had been passed, which is why we didn't do that in the first place. And then the long-term impact again will be to have to reduce those programs across the board throughout the next several years in order to meet that need and what the revenue will be coming in. So the current balance of the capital reserve is $9.6 million. We're suggesting a withdrawal, and we need permission from the community of $3 million. This was voted on last time. We are revoting on that. It was passed by 72%, but choosing to revote at this point, given the fact that the first budget was not successful for, with both of these propositions. And that's essentially to continue the capital project work that's being done. The reserve is set aside, and it can only be used for that purpose, for these capital expenses. And the technology reserve fund to withdraw $500,000 that supports the lion's share of our technology spending. And again, it cannot be used in any other area of the budget, and it allows us then to not have in the general fund, in the entire budget, technology spending to the degree that we otherwise would have. So in terms of some of the suggestions from people about spending on technology, this is from a reserve fund that's been set aside for that purpose. Technology spending is largely not coming from the general fund in the way it is out of the reserve fund. So the next steps for us, of course, we've gone through, note to the community several times, and have budget open houses again today. We will have another budget open house on the 17th, right here at 10:00 a.m., and send out a reminder to the community on the night of the 17th. Happy to talk to anybody, anywhere, anytime about this proposal, people, their overall suggestions, concerns, or anything going forward. Any questions for me from the board? And then I'll take a seat and we can have the rest of the hearing.
What they knew from us. I mean, we adopted it, and we have messaged on it, and it is what it is. So thank you very much for the update, Kevin. Appreciate that. And I will remind folks that most residences have received in their mailbox the budget newsletter, the revised budget newsletter, and it's quite a bit smaller, of course, than the original, but it has only the budget information, and it does also have the two resolutions as a reminder in there. Again, all the material, all the budget material is posted online and available for you to take a look at at any time. Please feel free to contact Dr. McGowan directly, Mr. Alamo, any member of the Board of Education if you have any questions or wish to, desire to receive further information. So at this point, we'll open it up there. We have some members of the public in attendance this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to ask a question or make a comment with regard to the budget itself? I'd ask you to raise your hand, it'd be recognized, and we'll ask you to step to the podium so that the audio picks up for everyone to hear. Is there anyone who would like to ask a question or make a comment that's here tonight? Yes, sir? Okay, would you step up there and give us your name and address if you don't mind, and then go ahead and ask the question? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Harris Honigman. I live at 320 Troy Road. My question is this, if this budget is passed, what will the effect be on future budgets? Once the capital expenditures are made and buildings are revised or built, that will probably incur additional costs for maintenance in future years, one, two, five, 10 years from now. What are those future financial requirements going to be? Can you tell us that?
Thank you.
So it's a good question. First, I would say to you that in many ways, because the facilities are going to be upgraded pretty significantly in terms of their infrastructure, that we're likely to see a decrease in some of the ongoing maintenance costs that we have right now to continue to operate buildings that are, and facilities as a part of the building, infrastructure that are past their useful life. So that would be the good news. There is an addition of the classroom space at Council Rock, which of course does incur an additional expense around the regular maintenance of that, so the cleaning essentially of that on a, on a regular basis, and the heating and cooling of that. I don't have a dollar amount, but certainly we could research that for you and get that back to you.
Follow-up? On balance, would there be a net increase in the cost because of, because of this budget if it is passed?
A net increase?
In future expenditures, ongoing expenditures to run the school system?
So I just, so I'm clear on the question. So you're asking, will there be an increase in cost going forward if this budget is passed?
Yes.
Well, cost to the taxpayer or cost within the district?
Well, to both.
I mean, if you're, if this budget is passed, you're voting on a budget that does increase taxes within the cap 2.34%?
This year or in the coming?
This coming year.
In the coming year, yes.
So that was everywhere from, I think it said $32 for a home valued at $75,000 to $150 some dollars for a home valued at $350,000. So yes, there's an increase to the taxpayer. If it's not passed, the law says that taxes cannot increase one penny, so you'd have no cost. The cost would be relative to opportunity, relative to quality of product, et cetera, because we'd have to cut programs significantly in a contingency budget in order to comply with that. Regardless though, the capital project will continue. So in other words, the debt's, the debt is agreed to, the building is well underway in terms of being built. If this budget was not to pass, that doesn't change the construction of the buildings. So that will still happen. That was approved by voters, and that's a commitment that we don't have a choice. That's already been made.
In the future years, five, 10 years from now, will this put in place commitments on our part to have additional increases to run the system, to utilize these, these capital expansions?
Yes. Well, I would say yes and no. The one thing I would point out is, and I do believe I understand what you're getting at, we're not building a huge addition to the square footage under roof that we have already in the district that we manage and staff and heat and clean. Council Rock is being expanded to accommodate full-day kindergarten, which involves a number of classrooms. So that building footprint, the building square footage, will be slightly larger in the full redesign. The other capital work that we're doing in the other three buildings is essentially modernizing and renovating areas that need it. So yes, Council Rock is getting slightly larger, and it will be staffed by more people because we're adding full-day kindergarten. So we'll have more students there on a full-time basis, and that will be in perpetuity. But I think that it's something we certainly can look at. One of the things with modernizing buildings, that includes air conditioning, heat systems, electric lighting, so we're modernizing to more energy-efficient products also. So there is some savings there, and as I said, we're not building an entirely new school building or rapidly or radically expanding an existing school building beyond Council Rock, so that the actual footage that we're staffing and managing is, it is slightly larger, and that will always be with us. But overall, that should not have a major impact on how we operate on a yearly basis is what I would say.
I would just like you to keep us informed on a year-to-year basis.
Oh, sure.
What the, what the commitments are for decisions, financial decisions that are made today and tomorrow, what they're going to be five, seven, 10 years from now.
Absolutely. That's a good point, and it's a good reminder. And actually, when we build a budget every single year, when we do the tax cap calculation, that sort of begins that process every single year, because that number tells us what we're allowed to raise in local levy, and in January, we know from the state what their revenue contribution is. So it's, it's sort of baked into the system, but it's a great reminder that people look at it in the long term, and it's not just a one-year situation. So.
I think that, I think we need to continue to think how we communicate that, but I do want to just point out that that was in the adoption of the project in the first place, and then in subsequent newsletters, we did point out that we would likely have to go over the cap within three years, and that that was part of the original conversation. So we should continue to do that, and we will, and need to make that really clear. We're doing more and more of that long-term forecasting, and in this budget process had shown the deficit of what would happen over the next several years based on decisions in this budget. So it's a point well taken.
And the, and what we agreed to, or what we put forth and the voters, voters agreed to on the capital project, as Dr. McGowan mentioned, we are actually right on target with what we told the public that would cost. So we'll continue to do that. And costs will grow, costs will grow where they grow and where choices become necessary, regardless of what a current budget might be, for example, you know, absent rapidly expanding our entire district somehow. So thank you. Is there any other comment or question from those that are in attendance on the budget itself? Is there any other comment, public comment on any other item that anyone wishes to bring up to the board or ask a question on tonight while folks are here? Okay, seeing then, we thank you for those in attendance, and we appreciate your input. And we do remind folks, as Dr. McGowan did, that on June 17th will be the next opportunity for budget open house at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, and then the budget revote on June 18th from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Brighton High School. Let's see, now we are back on track with the regular meeting agenda, folks. So could I have a motion, please, for approval of our agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Karen and seconded by Marv. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion, please, for approval of minutes from our June 4th, 2019 business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Christina. Any additions, corrections, deletions to those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our reports section this evening, you'll see under our financial reports section, in addition to the usual executive summary on the budget status report as of April 30th and the treasures report as of April 30th, 2019, from Lou and Dahlia Watts, our treasurer. We also have tonight a request for approval of retirement contribution reserve sub-fund resolution. That's the teacher reserve sub-fund, and there's also approval of the overall reserve fund plan document. We, just in, before I ask if there's any questions or motion on those approvals and acceptance of those reports, audit committee met earlier this evening, Larry and Karen and I, with both, representatives from both our internal and external auditors, and we can give you a full report on that a little bit later, and Dahlia and Lou also. And we did review at that point in time the two items that you see there as far as establishing the teacher reserve for retirement, which is new this year, approved by the state that we can begin, we can approve that and begin funding it, and also the reserve fund plan that Lou laid out for us in audit committee. And I would say, Karen, feel free to add, we reviewed those documents, had discussion, and are aligned with the recommendations as provided by Lou.
Yes, absolutely.
So before further discussion, let me ask, please, for a motion to approve items three and four there, the establishment, the retirement contribution fund for teachers, and the approval of the reserve fund plan document, and also acceptance of the budget status report and the treasures report. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marvin, seconded by Andrea. Does anyone else have any further questions or comments on any of those areas? Lou, anything else to add? We're pretty much covered it. All right then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our student representative report, and since it's the end of the year, we need two students to report out this evening, our outgoing and our incoming, correct?
Yes.
Yes, welcome.
Yeah, hi, I hope you're all doing well. It's been a minute since I've seen you all. First, I'd like to introduce our new student representative.
Hi, I'm Theo Vigiani Cole. I'm excited and ready to take the opportunity.
Welcome, Theo.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very excited to turn it over to Theo. I have no doubt that he's going to be great. So we have a couple of things that have happened at the high school since we've last met, which one of the big things was Spring Fest. First, I'd like to thank the board, anyone who was there for helping out with money and stuff. We really appreciate that. We had food trucks and like bouncy courses that were like new additions this year, which I think was really nice. The students really seemed to like it, and we had shirts that were sponsored by the Alumni Association, so that definitely was nice because people didn't have to bring in money to be a part of like Spring Fest attire, which was great. We also had one of our own alumni and teachers speak as our like guest speaker for Spring Fest, which I think a lot of people were very moved by. He did a great job, so it was really nice to have him speak. We had a new exec come in, as you can see, Theo is here, and then we have all of our other new members, so that's going to be really exciting for next year. I have a feeling everyone's going to do a really good job. We have our new councils that those elections took place at Spring Fest, and we just gave the results, so it should be an exciting homecoming with all those new councils. Excited to see what they do. Sports, softball, one sectional, so congratulations softball. You guys definitely deserved that win. And our last day of school is on June 17th. That will be followed by finals week, so that is definitely, people are probably pretty nervous about that. I only have one final because I'm a senior. And lastly, graduation is on the 25th, so head to our graduation. It'd be really nice to have community support, and our commencement speakers are Sachi Sharp and Sam O'Connor, so congratulations, guys. Can't wait to see what you have to say. Lastly, Theo got a name tag, and that's pretty big news. Congratulations, Theo. I'd just like to say goodbye to you all. It was a pleasure being a student representative this year, and I wish everyone good luck in the future.
Same with you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the service. We appreciate it. Welcome, Theo, and I look forward to seeing you beginning with our new meeting here also. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our, normally we have our Monroe County School Boards Association standing committees, but those have been completed for the year. I will mention that we had the annual meeting, the School Boards Association annual meeting that Marv was able to attend, and Sora and I, and the one thing that was interesting about it, Webster hosted at Webster-Schrader High School, and afterwards, we did get a tour of the aquaponics facility that they put in over there, where they farm-raised tilapia and utilizes the closed system to feed all of the greens and produce that they grow in that facility. At dinner that evening, some of it came from that facility, all the greens, the salad, the veggies, and the tilapia, if you ordered that menu choice, right? So it was, it was an interesting night.
It was amazing, amazing.
Yeah, nice celebration of Monroe County School Board. BOSI's report, anything new to update with BOSI's?
Well, Sora says she's been busy, as many of the board members, with many graduation. Last night's East Start graduation, a Brighton student got a BOSI's Foundation Scholarship. An East Start student from Pittsburgh got a scholarship from NYSER, the state insurance organization, and she was one of 100 applicants. We have eliminator, or BOSI's has eliminated job coach positions, and that's it.
Okay. People don't realize how many graduations there are, separate graduations from BOSI's.
Oh, yeah.
15, 16, something like that?
Something like that.
Something like that, we were talking about it. And so it's, the BOSI's board members are really... So it's, the BOSI's Board members really attempt to attend every single one of those and they're all over on different nights. So thank you and thank, and thanks, Sora, again, on our behalf, Marv, for her service again as our representative for the BOSI's Board. Other Board Member Reports, I don't know if we have any specific, we meet every single day, but Christina, do you have anything you wanted to add in terms of activity?
No, I don't think I do.
I think we've kind of covered a lot of it, but...
The only thing I'll add is that our Wellness Committee will be meeting this summer for the first time that we're doing this, July 23rd, from 9:00 to 12:00, we have a half-day session. We're starting, we're going to be focusing wellness in the, through the lens of diversity, equity and inclusion. So we're excited about our upcoming year.
Great, fantastic. Thank you. Karen?
We had our Audit Committee meeting that you mentioned earlier. We had both of our auditors here today. And internal risk assessment audits really are fascinating subjects. It doesn't sound like it would be, but looking deeply at all of our, how our operations work, right? That audit is designed to say, are we doing the right thing in all the different ways we operate? And I find that fascinating. But the Teacher Retirement System Reserve is really the key piece of news from Audit Committee today. That's long overdue, that piece. We have an Employee Retirement System Reserve and we haven't been able to use that money we've saved to put towards the Teacher Retirement System. And I'd like the state to allow us to build that a little faster than we can. We can only contribute a certain amount each year, but we are able to build it using money that's already in the Employee Reserve Fund, Retirement System Reserve Fund. And I think that that's key, that we'll be able to build that reserve using funds we already have set aside for Retirement System Contributions. That's a positive thing.
That was a change in state law finally, and we are going to go ahead and Lou has been very prudent in bringing us along on that to make sure that we take advantage of that for the future use. So, thank you.
It's the right thing to do.
Marv, anything new?
Nope.
Do you have anything?
Brighton believes committee met last Thursday. Already studying to talk about the next school year, kind of hard to believe.
They blend one into the other. I mean, really, there's really...
They just blend one into the other. They're revamping how they're going to give out Brighton believes awards, where it used to be at the run. It looks like it's going to go back to, within the buildings.
Oh, okay.
And then they will, the plan right now is to have them presented at a board meeting.
Oh, okay.
And not all at once, but periodically throughout the year so that we can recognize the recipients and then the community can watch as well.
That's fantastic. I think that's a great idea. Yeah, and I think it'll bring more awareness to the group's work, too. So that would be my two cents. Okay, thank you.
And the good deeds that people are recognized for.
That they're doing all the time, usually under the radar, you're right. So, thank you. One quick follow-up to Karen's point, just so folks realize and understand, Audit Committee is Karen and Larry, Larry Davis, who had another commitment this evening, and I. And we meet three to four times a year with Lou and Dahlia. And again, tonight, we had representatives from both our internal and external auditors there. And we took a look also at the Claims Audit Reports. And it's important that we pay attention to that and go through that material and review that. And Lou and Dahlia and the group always have, and Chris Ticky, who does our Claims Auditing, always have that ready for us in great detail so that we can go through that and take a look and make sure. The greatest, I would say, takeaway from that is Karen sort of touched on, having our, both our internal and external auditors take a look at things and keep us on the right path and always generally praise the work that our folks do. And we stay ahead of the game and stay ahead of things. It's really important that that be done in a prudent way for the long haul, so. The other thing is I'll make note of all, we've begun all the year-end activities and a number of us were at some combination last Friday of the High School Awards Assembly, the Council Rock On the Road, Hot Dog Roast and Play Day at Brookside School, the Brighton Teachers Association District Spring Festival and Celebration later in the afternoon, which is always a great event. And then Friday night, the Oak Hill, at Oak Hill Country Club, the Alumni Hall of Fame Dinner, which I understand was fascinating and, again, for fascinating inductees. All of those things are now well underway as we sprint toward June, July 9th when we reorganize and start all over again, so. Let's see, Brighton Teachers Association, speaking of which, all those great end-of-the-year things. Judy Wegman.
Thank you. Greetings from the Brighton Teachers Association. A few things to highlight since we last worked together. In French Road, preparation for their stream study at Powder Mill Park, Mrs. Harp's fifth grade technology students, been investigating past sightings of black bears as well as identifying dangerous ticks and macro invertebrates. Interesting. Jumping to Brighton High School, May 17th was one of Brighton High School's Senior Decision Days. Seniors were invited to stop in to a computer lab to complete their senior exit survey, celebrate their decisions for after high school. It's a great way to celebrate these students and what they've accomplished over the last 13 years as well as for their future. Becca Fres, Ms. Lani Mazrowski's students, presented a fifth grade Human Rights Day of Celebration of Learning. That was on March 20th. She was so proud of her students, best of all, they were so proud of themselves, delving into the history of anti-racism. They did an amazing job growing as human beings and totally owned their newfound understandings and shared that enthusiasm for their chosen topics with their peers, staff and parents. And you have some photos of some of these items highlighting across the district, including one of those. At 12 Corners Middle School, our own Cindy Luciano and Victoria Mozetti are going to the National Schools to Watch Middle Level Forum National Conference, the end of June as presenters. They've been presenters before. I think a wonderful accomplishment for them is that they were asked to return and they are now ticketed session. So really amazing, the work they do. Jumping back to French Road, students in, a student in Katie Covert's class started a coin collection for cystic fibrosis, kind of a penny war between the grades. And then the students actually, they didn't want to put the coins through one of those machines that counts it for you because I guess the machine keeps a little bit of it as, you know. So they chose to come to school early on several days to roll coins and hang out together. So it was very sweet. We wanted to let everyone know, especially those who may live in the city of Rochester, Brighton High School teacher Amy Malloy is running as a candidate for the Rochester City District Board of Education. BT is proud to have a member seeking this type of educational leadership position. I'm jumping from school to school here, stay with me. At French Road, in addition to the anticipated routine of learning that occurs every day in Sean Rainey's class, there, he had invited parents and other significant adults in students' lives to come into the classroom to share their passions, their why and to be in why they chose the careers they chose. Sean shared that they had a terrific response with the children, enthusiastically engaged, along with the students being really proud of the adults in their lives. 12 Corners Middle School, on May 16th, 25 eighth-grade German students boarded a bus to Stovermont. They made several stops, including one to Ben &amp; Jerry's. They checked into the Trapp Lodge in Stovermont, still run by the Von Trapp family of Sound and Music fame. They enjoyed some Austrian food, spoke German with folks there at the lodge. Looks like they just had a fantastic time going from place to place to place. Weather cooperated and, of course, our students represented our district well. Back in French Road, Mrs. Close's fifth grade had an unusual tech class where the Brighton Fire Department firefighter showed the class how they use new technology to stay safe when fighting fires. The truck had a pneumatic anchoring system, remote control hoses and an iPad-enabling reporting systems in the front seat. So a special thank you to the Brighton Fire Department. They're always so great about coming out to our schools. At Council Rock Primary School, Olivia Connolly, she's a second grader in Mrs. Banbury's class, had a story chosen for publication by the Rochester Area Literacy Council during its annual writing contest. And the theme of this year was Voices of Youth, Imagination, Ideas, Innovation. And Olivia's book will be public, Olivia's story will be published in a book along with other winners and it will be presented to her in an awards ceremony on June 10th at the Seneca Park Zoo. So that's fun. Also, Council Rock teachers Caitlin Baker and Liz Files have been working with their classes to learn more about outer space, including planets, sun, the moon. And you'll have, you'll see a photo there of a student, a student learning about the phases of the moon, gathering data through all his senses by using Oreo cookies to imitate the phases of the moon. That's my kind of activity. 12 Corners Middle School, on May 4th, the Best Buddies Club participated in the Best Buddies Friendship Walk. Sean Mann was the grand marshal, did an amazing job giving a speech and leading the walk. Council Rock, thanks to a grant from Monroe One BOSI School Library System, our school was able to add over 40 books in languages other than English for the library collection. Fourth-grade instrumentalists are currently preparing for their June 12th, is that tonight?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, thank you. June 13th string concerts, always amazing to see how much growth they've made during their fourth-grade year. And just a couple of final remarks, Brighton Teachers Association, we had 10 members and some of their spouses participated in a Habitat for Humanity Building Project. The first Saturday in June was spent doing that and they built, actually went to two different building sites and did some building for the people in the Rochester community. Special thank you to them. I want to especially thank Beth Jaclyn for her longtime service as our Brighton Teachers Association Board of Education representative. We're so proud to have her representing us and how she's moving on in her retirement. And finally, thank you to the Board of Education, to each and every one of you for all you do to support our students and supporting our teachers. It's much appreciated.
Thank you very much, Judy. And our thanks and appreciation to Beth certainly, and our well wishes to her and her recovery and certainly in her retirement. But special thanks to you for all that you do and your leadership, not only as a teacher leader, but as a district leader. We really appreciate our relationship. We appreciate the effort that you make on a 24/7 basis to assist students and their families and this community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. It's my honor. Thank you.
Superintendent's Report, Dr. McGowan.
Just a few quick items. Of course, just a reminder, we have a vote on Tuesday, the 18th, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Brighton High School. We're also excited, of course, graduation and all of the end-of-year events and we get to celebrate kids. So all the other conversations we have here about programs and where we are financially, it really does come down to that and these great accomplishments for our kids, the fantastic experiences that they have had and the way the staff has supported them and used their talent, their expertise, their time, their sweat equity to really make a great experience for our kids. And over the next several weeks, we get to celebrate that. So we're excited for graduation on the 25th at RIT. We have our Blueprint Planning Day on the 28th, so not long after graduation where we say, okay, how did we do and what do we need to be doing next, thoughtfully, planfully over the next several years? Where do we want to go with our kids and how do we continue to build on the great success of this past year and the last several years? Everything that was reported to you last Tuesday, I think certainly speaks to that kind of work, again, done by a very talented staff from all of our administrators, all of our staff members, teachers, faculty, everybody who contributes to that and, of course, our community members who support that as well. So thanks to our community, thanks to our staff members. This certainly has been a challenging period of time as we work through and respectfully receive the feedback from our community and think thoughtfully about how to make that work going forward. And our staff has certainly have been essential to that process. We appreciate that work and our leadership team is making that happen, developing plans around that. So we thank the community for their support, look forward to seeing them at the vote and, again, our staff administrators for making that happen and for a great year. Above all else, the great work done by our kids and staff members through the year makes us very, very proud. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, sir, for your outstanding leadership on an everyday basis.
Thank you.
This is our last scheduled meeting of the year, but you never quite know. But, so thank you so much.
I think this will be, the administrators all just looked up. This will be our last meeting for the year.
It's only June 11th. Next up this evening, we have Agenda Item Number Seven, bids. We have, let's, let me ask for a motion, please, for approval of the nine separate bids that are listed there and then we'll have some discussion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Juline. These are nine cooperative bids. As part of our arrangement in Monroe County, we subscribe to the, all of us together as cooperative districts, utilize the purchasing agent from BOSI's to, to work on competitive bidding, cooperative bidding, to take advantage of the best pricing we possibly can on commodities and supplies, oftentimes off of state purchase contracts, so that we can be assured that we're getting, getting these purchases at the lowest possible price. These nine bids that we're asking you to approve tonight include things like music equipment supplies, our natural gas supply, bread, school lunch food items, ice cream and frozen desserts, milk, juice, produce, athletic equipment and also beverages. So that's the way that system works and it's efficient and it makes it work to the betterment of all of us in terms of what we spend. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We also tonight have the approval, requested approval for second read of two policies that we did go through first read at our last meeting. A motion, please, to approve the second read of Policy 7521 and 7618. So moved. Moved by Marv, seconded by Christina. You'll recall that these two policies are being amended and revised due to the director's title, so the people personnel to student services, and we needed to clarify that in both of those policies, so it was more of a technical fix. So I have nothing further to update this. Do you have anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We also tonight have to, even though we previously had discussed the BOSI's, our BOSI's, BOSI's One project, on their capital project, we discussed this previously on two different occasions. Tonight, we are required to formally and legally approve the project bond resolution so that bids can be let and that work can be started with BOSI's. So what we have tonight, and I will read this, ask for a motion that be resolved that the Board of Education of Brighton Central School District does authorize, oh no, that's a different, sorry about that, I'm on the wrong one, that's something else. I was talking about the purchasing agent. This is the one to, okay, here we go. So we're approving and adopting the bond resolution tonight, authorizing the Chief Fiscal Officer of the district to pay our share to the treasurer of the BOSI system toward that capital equipment, a capital project that we had previously approved. And tonight, we'll do that and so that that project can get started and that they can go ahead and issue all of the things that they need to do. We are funding that. It's funded by each district over a three-year period, as we previously discussed, and we have made our arrangements to transfer and put money aside so that it will not have an effect on our operating budget going forward. So Lou has prudently planned on this going forward and we are not borrowing for our share of this.
And it should not affect the tax levy.
It should not affect the tax levy going forward. Correct. Motion, please, to make that approval of the bond resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Andrea. Anything further, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll make note, Kim, on this that, because I think we have to go first, I have here, Larry has answered this evening, so we'll make sure we make note of that. Thank you. Maybe also now I have, please, a motion for approval of jewel agreement between the district and a specific employee?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv and seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion, please, for approval of a separation agreement between the district and a particular employee?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Christina, was it? Moved by Andrea, I'm sorry, seconded by Juline. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, back to the purchasing agent from Monroe Two Orleans BOSI's. This is a certification that we have to, Kim has to file, we have to do this every year. We mentioned the competitive or the cooperative bidding. A motion, please, for approval for the purchasing agent from Monroe Two Orleans BOSI's to enter into all and any cooperative bidding ventures for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion that we can have conversation, if you would like, a motion, please, for approval of the AP Human Geography Textbook Recommendation as prepared by John Clementson, Dr. Baker?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Juline. As we, you saw in memo from me and also an agenda item that was added, we, as you know previously, we've talked about AP Human Geography is an added course next year at Brighton High School. John Clementson, the instructor for that course, has gone through the full textbook approval process and recommendation, researching four different texts and coming up with the one that we've been given the detail on. that we've been given the detail on. Does anybody have any questions or further comment on that, or wish to read the entire textbook? Not your own time.
Oh, mildly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion, please, for approval of a municipal road use agreement between the district and the town of Brighton.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Christina, I think, I can't tell down there, the two of them sound too much alike. Just for the public's information, as part of our capital project at Council Rock School, those of you that live nearby Council Rock or have been around the building, there's a lot of work going on in that building, in and around it, and there will be for a while, and that requires a lot of access using Roland Parkway. This is an agreement with the town that spells out the responsibilities of the school district in terms of the maintenance and possible restoration of that right of way and that town street should any damage occur, so this is based on discussions that we've had with the town going back, that everybody has reached agreement on, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then finally, tonight, our consent agenda, which includes a number of items, as it typically does at the end of the year. Ma'am, we have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Marv. I will make note of two items, two gifts that are included this evening. A gift of $300 from Keith and Susan Miller to the Visual and Performing Arts Department, to the Dennis Miller Scholarship Fund in honor of the late Arthur Miller, and also a gift in the amount of $855 from the Friends of the Arts in Brighton, to the Legacy Fund for Judy Shopper and Lois Mahalco, so we thank those folks for those generous gifts. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
I have one.
And we have an abstention?
Yes.
Christina, and Christina is abstaining as a family member is listed in the personnel agenda.
And I have a question.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay. On the personnel agenda, summer performing arts assignments, can you pull that up?
I, sure, I didn't prepare it, so I mean, I know the answer to your question.
Okay, let me, so.
I'm open.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay, so Kay, I believe she's the customer, now she may have an assistant who would be Jay, but where it says music director, and then I believe that it says customer, so I don't know if something is missing, doesn't look quite right.
Right, so there should be an additional name, because she's not...
Something's, something's not right there, I don't know what it is, but I know that something's not right, unless she's doing costumes and music. See what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. So can we just check on that and make sure we got it right?
Right, so I would approve it as written.
Approve it as written, and we'll make an adjustment if needed.
Correct. We can amend it to July 9th.
Amend it to July 9th. Okay. Did we call a question? All in favor, okay, we did, let's re-vote then.
Yeah.
All in favor of the consent agenda, the personnel agenda included in there as written, with the understanding that if an adjustment has to be made, it'll be brought to us in a later date. All in favor?
Aye.
An abstention?
One.
Christina? And one abstention, Larry.
Sorry, I got that.
That's okay. All right, thank you very much. Anything further? Dr. McGowan this evening, board members, anything this evening? And we will close business this evening, again, just a couple of reminders, we next meet on July 9th, is a 9:00 a.m. meeting, that's the reorganization meeting for the new 2019-2020 school year. On June 18th, it's very, very important, we ask the public to please come out and vote on our revised budget proposal, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Brighton High School, and as we're finishing up the regular year and last scheduled meeting, just a couple of quick thank yous to folks that are a bit out of their radar, that do so much work for us all the time. Our board clerk, district clerk, Kim Landsafame, who makes this all happen all the time, Dan Goldman, our communications specialist coordinator, who makes sure that we're getting out the news and notes from the Board of Education, and getting everything posted online, and our magnificent video production crew, without them, first of all, we wouldn't have a period to start, and thank you so much for making it work, and getting it online, and getting it the way it needs to be, so that residents can take a look at their leisure if they want, and watch two years' worth of archived Board of Education videos, so, thanks, everybody, for all of your efforts. With that, a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Yes. Moved, moved by Marv, seconded by Jolene, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board